Okay, so welcome everyone to our Committee of the Whole for March 7. I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'm going to ask if there are any items to be added to the agenda. We had one submitted by councillor Sampson earlier today regarding a code of code of conduct policy. So could I assuming councillor Sampson still like to add that?
Yeah, I think it's already been, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just going to get a sign of consensus from councillors. Do you please raise your hand if you're okay with adding that to the agenda? Okay.
Census if it's added beforehand, right? I think that's just for if it's added at the last minute now like.
Yeah, so we didn't have consensus beforehand, councillor. So you're a little quiet. I don't know.
No, I'll plug it in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right on. Okay, other items to add to the agenda, I would like to add in camera personnel with the with the name of council if you're okay with that. But I guess hands up if you're okay with adding in camera personnel to the agenda. Okay, thank you. So consensus on that. Are there any other items to add? Okay, great. So could I have a motion then to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thanks councillor Digdon. Can I get a second around that?
A second then.
Thank you deputy warden. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the review of minutes from February 14th, 2022. So those were circulated in advance. Does anybody have any errors or omissions to note on those minutes? Okay, so during that, can I get a motion to approve the minutes please?
Yeah, I'm making them.
Councillor Brence Sampson, I think, made that motion. So could I get a second there?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion on the minutes?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So we're into our presentations. We've got some guests joining us today. So welcome, welcome to everyone who is here to present and who is watching from the the virtual gallery. It's my great pleasure to welcome Tim Mank and Jean Kersey from Arc of the Coast to give an overview on a project that they have on the go. So I will mention gentlemen that I'm going to probably stick pretty closely to time. You'll take about 15 minutes for your presentation and Q and A because we've got quite an agenda ahead of us this evening. So we really appreciate you being here.
No, no problem.
Over to you.
Yes, well, hello from Gabarus. I'm Tim.
I'm Jean.
We are actually Arc of the Coast is sort of a shorthand for our very cumbersome name, which describes better our area of interest. We incorporated as a cooperative, the Arc of the Coast Eastern Cape Breton Cooperative Alliance Limited under joint stocks in 2017. We've been operating as a group looking at opportunities for not just Gabarus, but for this coast that shares many common problems. We have sort of a motto we use in general to say that we're all in the same leaky boat together. And unless we learn to bail in unison and row in the same direction, we're all in trouble. So with that, I think it's important to give a bit of history. Jean and I moved here from the United States to retire in 2008, selling our property in Vermont. And when we came here first in 2006 and bought a small cottage, we thought this would be a great place to vacation, but we found it so wonderful, we decided to stay. When he retired from Washington DC from the federal government and I was retired by the recession. At any rate, we're very glad to be full-time residents here. Jean's a dual citizen and I'm a permanent resident of Canada. Our background is that we arrived here knowing that we were going to stay here for arguably the rest of our lives with a commitment to this area that grew over time. And by 2010, we witnessed the what seemed to us the imminent failure of the Gabarus seawall, which had been built by and maintained by the federal government since 1946. And for some reason, for 20 years, there'd been a dispute about who owned it. So Jean and I dove into discovering who owned it. And it took us about two and a half, three years of full-time access to information requests and dealing with publicity that got across the country, including the front page of the Globe and Mail to promote that our 300-year-old village, if this seawall were not repaired, would be inundated by the ocean. And one third of the village made uninhabitable and our heart fishing harbor, our productive fishing harbor would come to an end. So when we succeeded finally in 2013, 2014, in getting the province, the federal government, not DFO that owns it, but then ECBC and the municipality to jointly invest $750,000 to repair the seawall. The wall that fishermen here told us would have failed that next winter in one of three places or all three places was preserved. We subsequently worked with another group. There are six nonprofit organizations here, three of which Jean and I are co-founders and directors of. Arc of the Coast being one, another one, Friends of Gabarus Society that did that work on seawall. And the Gabarus Lightkeepers, where the lighthouse was imminently going to fall into the sea due to coastal erosion and we ended up getting our our work together with a group that founded to save that and we successfully got that done, moving it 80 feet back from the shore and restoring it. At any rate, that's a short form. Why we are doing what we're doing with Arc of the Coast has to do with the fact that when we got done with the projects here in Gabarus that we thought were most important, we started to look more broadly about the reconnection of Gabarus and Lewisburg. A 60-plus year severance of the road that occurred when they rebuilt the fortress Lewisburg. And when we looked at that, we recognized that the chances of being able to get either federal or provincial provincial investments in that, unless there was an improvement of the economic opportunities on this coast and therefore tax revenues, that it was unlikely we were going to get that kind of funding or cooperation. So when we started to look at the policies that were out there, we found that there was great lack of policies for investment in this coast. And Mike Kellaway, our current MP, was a co-founder and was the vice president of our organization from its inception. And he carries around with him to this day in his vest pocket, I believe. A map that I sent to him, I gave to him in a meeting, I believe, that shows the pushpins that indicate the investment by the federal government in Cape Breton. And in our coast, there were no pushpins. And I know that the fortress Lewisburg is an exception there, of course. So we started to look at what we could do that could possibly use the assets that are here on this coast that are available to all the communities that have fishing harbors that might enable people who chose to do so to engage in another ocean resource-based business operation. And in searching for that, we came across in 2018, the ocean farming industry, which started relatively recently in Maine. And it turns out that our first contact there is now the head of World Wildlife Fund, Washington DC, as the strategic investment advisor. But he was good enough to drive up here in January of 2018 to make a presentation at CBU to about 30 people we gathered together from various disciplines. His role was that he had been a muscle farmer in Maine and began experimenting with growing seaweeds. And over a series of years, he not only was successful growing both of those, but also producing a factory to be able to create products, to be able to have an end market for them. And in fact, as we got to know Paul, he became aware of our intensive efforts on this in this regard. And last year, we were offered a $50,000 grant from the headquarters of World Wildlife Fund to advance our efforts. That is being administered by World Wildlife Fund Canada. So our project is to educate people in the fishing communities and in the community at large about this new opportunity that exists that's being prosecuted across the arc of our latitude from Europe to Alaska. And Atlantic Canada is definitely a place where this has not advanced very far. We expect that Maine, which now has 16 operating shellfish seaweed farms that supply a factory that was founded by Paul, that had a 12,000% increase in in business operations last year alone, will be an indicator of the potential for this kind of industry here. The beauty of it to us was there are assets here, existing wharves, existing seafarers, boats, all of the things one would need if there was another industry that was to emerge here. So the industry that we're looking at, interestingly enough, it's centered around a season that begins in September and wraps up in April with the harvesting of seaweeds. Now, shellfish operations continue year-round, but you can do those while also doing lobster fishing or crab fishing by going out and tending the traps in between runs for lobster and crab. The other issue is that the ocean chemistry is changing and there are impacts that are being noticeable of ocean acidification. That is the acid formation in the water of carbonic acid by the carbon we put atmosphere with our human contribution to pollution. And that is going to have an inhibiting factor on the growth of shellfish. It's been doc- well documented. Lobster also are somewhat problematic in that the Gulf of Maine, which is where as a young man, I my family always got our lobster from the Portland area, Casco Bay. There are virtually no lobster fishes left in that area at any to an extent. The northern part of Maine still retains the lobster fishing industry. In their case, it has to do with ocean warming and the migration offshore or further north, which we've noticed in statistics here, there are a number of lobsters that we call bon tiers that are in our market, in our waters. That would be an indicator perhaps with no offense to our north, that perhaps if the oceans warm here, that might be something that we would have to be aware of as communities going, depends so heavily on lobster especially, but also snow crab. So that's where we started. We also along the way have worked with the Fort Shu St Peters Road Group who asked us to join them in efforts to do what we had intended to do originally, which was to get improvements to the Gab- the Lewisburg, I'm sorry, the road between, it's literally a trail from the causeway all the way to the fortress. Their focus was on the St Peters to Fort Shu section, which is in terrible shape. And they were successful and we hope we assist them a bit in getting some grants or actually promises of repairs. And that is part of our plan. Looking at cell phone coverage before there was any chance that it seemed it was going to come or putting up towers to provide that cooperatively owned. Those are all issues that have been on table for us. We are now looking at working with Gardner Pinful Consulting, which coincidentally did the study on reopening the Gabarus Lewisburg Road in 2008, which indicated that it would make money for the province and the community through tourism if it were to be reopened. They're going to work with us on a public outreach campaign, which will be quite broad. Initially, we're going to work with the Agriculture Association of Nova Scotia. We had a meeting with them several days ago about collaborating with them. And they're going to provide to us the names and contact information for all the shellfish farmers in all of Nova Scotia to form the basis of a survey to try and begin looking at the attitudes towards seaweed farming amongst a group that already have leases and licenses in place for shellfish, which seems to be quite a both a profitable and a proven industry in other parts of the world. We also got a grant of $8,500 worth of software from the Esri, which is the largest geospatial planning group in the world. Their software is used for terrestrial planning, but they gave us access to technical support and software for marine spatial planning. That is to work on trying to identify sites that would be appropriate and perhaps most productive and warning off from sites that might not be in terms of planning locations potential in three weeks. So we also have been working with NSCC, as Amanda knows, and informing all the government entities on this coast of what we see as an opportunity and also the issues that give rise to the need to look at other opportunities for our communities. We feel quite certain that we will have some governmental support for this, including that we will go to ACOA and to other places in order to seek additional funding beyond our initial funding. The NSCC and the Cape Breton Partners working together on concepts that we brought to both groups originally, probably three or four years ago, and they're prosecuting it now. And essentially that wraps up the presentation in short and we would welcome questions and whatever answers we have will provide to you.
There it is. Thanks so much, Tim. All right, so yeah, so I mean, I guess I'll start off with a kind of question comment. You're at this stage, I think, kind of seeking some like just a notional support from council for the work that you're doing on this project. It's not a financial.
Correct. The reason for that is that we have not had a forward-facing website, a public-facing website until now when we're working on launching one in the next week or so. The purpose being that we did not want to get ahead of our ski, over the tip of our skis. We didn't want to be putting out information that would be out, so to speak, in the wild that could be circulated amongst people who could build up opposition. And in particular, there was the example, we've worked with the port developers in Sydney and worked a lot with them over the years and a lot of opposition built up in the community amongst people who were not all that sure of why there should be a port there, et cetera. And we didn't want to have with a new idea being presented any potential opposition emerging behind the scenes before we're fully ready to roll this out with all the educational programs and Gardner Pinful's assistance in doing market studies and also public surveys. So we're looking forward to, CBRM has indicated that their willingness to have us put CBRM on as a supporter on our website when it emerges. We're asking if the council would consider doing the same for Richmond County. And we believe we'll get that support from Port Hoxbury as well, because Brenda Chisenbeaton came to our first organizational meetings and has been a strong supporter of the concept, at least in theory, since the inception of our cooperative.
I swear it was my first Zoom meeting. I'm forgetting to unmute. Two years in. Oh my goodness. So councillors, I guess we'd be kind of checking in to see, do you have any questions for Tim or Jean? If not, would you be, you know, okay with them listing us as a supporter on their website? And I think we could maybe get a motion of counsel if you're okay with that. So councillor Bren Sampson, I see you unmuted.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. I don't know if my sound is louder now. Is it clear?
It's a little better, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think plugging it in seems to make the difference even in the battery is. Anyhow, yeah, no, and nice to see you guys again. I remember we spoke one night in Franboys, but.
Yes, nice to see you.
Be interested to, you know, to see this moving forward. I think, I think it provides a good opportunity here and we have a lot of the infrastructure in place, as they said.
Okay. Okay. Councillor Sean Sampson, see you also unmuted.
Yeah, no, I'll second that motion, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know if I quite heard councillor Bren Sampson make a motion, but.
Yeah, Gloria, I'd be more than willing to. I'll make the motion that we provide supporting principle for this project moving forward.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Sean Sampson, you're seconding that motion?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. So any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So Tim and Jean, we're, we're good to go. So I really appreciate you taking the time to come and present to us. I know it's been a long slog for you folks and you're doing some really great work in a region of the county that.
And what's the best way for us, what's the best way for us to keep you all in the loop and to give you information as we go forward?
Um, I mean, email, email works well as long as it's not a flood of it. But I, you know, I would say it'd be great to see you back after, you know, at the table, you know, and I, I don't know, when you feel like there's enough progress being made on your project and, you know, I think it'd be great to have you come back and chat with us. I find this is a really, really effective way to stay in touch, you know? When we have folks come in to do a little presentation, just kind of a chat like this before committee of the whole.
We'd be glad to do that in person, in fact. At this time of year, it's more problematic as we've seen lately with the weather. But it'd be good for us to know, since we aim to have a lot of our public outreach in place and some of the responses back by about June. Is there an adjournment period for the Committee of the Whole in the summertime?
Yeah, so our last committee meeting before, I'm just looking at my calendar here, before the summer would be likely June 13.
Well, I would say that we would be pleased to, if you don't have anything on the agenda, then that we could give you a brief update on where we're at at that point in time. We'd be happy to do it. And if possible, we do it in person.
That would be fantastic. Yeah, for sure. So Dawn and Yvonne, maybe we could make a note to add Arc of the Coast to our June 13 committee at all.
And we should hopefully, if things go as planned, have a good access for information about what we're doing on our website as well. So please drop in and, and take a look and maybe if you have more questions or suggestions, we'd be welcome, we'd be welcoming those.
Well, send the link as soon as it's live.
Awesome. That's exactly what I was going to ask you. Please do so and we'll make sure that it gets circulated to all of our councillors.
Thanks so much for your time. We appreciate it. We appreciate the vote of confidence in the concept.
Absolutely. Thank you. Bye-bye. Have a good evening.
Have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a presentation from Celeste Hotel. So welcome, Celeste.
Thank you.
About straight Richmond housing matters and regarding a specific request for support as well. So over to you, Celeste.
Okay, thanks a lot. I believe that there was a slide deck that was circulated in advance. So I'm just going to minimize my screen and just, I'm just going to bring it up because I'm not sure whether or not if I, if I show it, will people see it?
Yes, Celeste, I gave you co-host permission.
Oh, you did? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Here we go. Okay, so can everyone see it okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for joining you this evening and spending a few minutes with you to talk a little bit about some of recent developments with the coalition. I know that as a council, you're very familiar with the work of the coalition. You certainly would have been inundated during the municipal election campaign in 2020 by a number of communications and infographics that we had prepared as a coalition raising housing as a municipal issue. I did have an opportunity to join you last January and delighted to be back again. But for those people that are joining the meeting and are not aware of the coalition, the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition is a group of individuals from the Richmond County straight area that had been meeting for three years now. We formed the coalition in January of 2019 and it was brought about as a result of a think tank that had been held in Port Hoxbury that had about 70 people attend. Stakeholders from various groups and organizations all concerned about housing issues within the straight region. So as an organization, we're very committed to ensuring that there is inclusive, healthy, affordable, sustainable and accessible housing that's available in the straight Richmond communities. And part of our work is to explore and support the development of housing options and we have been doing that in many, many different ways over the last three years. Because we are a coalition, we are not set up to be a housing provider. So our role has more been to educate the public, to educate ourselves, to raise issues, to bring forward issues that could impact policy and just overall coordinate a more strategic approach to how people view housing. So some of the local realities that we're facing now around housing is that many housing needs in rural communities are very invisible. So we don't really know what's going on. We don't have a really good sense. We hear a lot, but we don't have a really good sense about what's happening. We have a term that's referred to as a hidden homeless and we do have people in Richmond County that are considered to be living rough. That may surprise some people, but some of you may be very familiar that there have been constituency constituents Richmond County that have been sleeping outdoors and there has been intervention to support those individuals in recent months. We also have people that are forced to couch surf because they don't have stable housing. And what that means is that people go from home to home. So they may be staying with friends, they overstay their welcome, they may be staying with a sister, they overstay their welcome, et cetera. This is especially true for some youth in our community because we don't have any housing or shelters that are available for youth. So if a youth is in a very difficult position at home, sometimes they find themselves staying with, with friends or what have you. One of the things that we've become increasingly aware of is that there is a huge need for seniors housing that is both affordable as well as accessible and also a form of housing that is kind of more supportive or has an assistive element to it. One of the things that you would be familiar with is back in 2019, the seniors take action. Seniors Take Action Coalition actually undertook a senior survey and almost 300 seniors from Richmond County in the straight area participated to communicate their housing needs. We also have single women living in danger and situations due to family violence and lack of housing options. We know that the high levels of child and family poverty contribute greatly to the need for affordable housing. And one of the things that was of deep concern to me was to find out that Richmond County placed three in the last child poverty report in terms of the incidence of poverty in the province. So they placed three out of about 20 communities. Public housing, as you all know, has a long waiting list and despite vacancies, the housing programs don't always reach the people in greatest need. And what I mean by that is the only public housing that is available is for seniors and families. We have a lot of single individuals and people of other demographics that are also in need of core housing. Some of the gaps that we're aware of is the unlimited affordable housing for all demographics. And this has become increasingly significant in the last year or two years through COVID, where the price of housing has been gouged and people are selling housing and so there's less and less on the rental market. We don't have any emergency housing for youth or men in our community. There is one women's shelter in Port Hoxbury. There is no second stage housing for women who leave Leeside to move into on a temporary basis until they get kind of more established. We only have 127 seniors apartments through public housing and 67 in the straight Richmond area. We have very limited housing options to address seniors requiring different levels of care. We have nursing home and that's it. So you're either in your home or in a nursing home or in a hospital. There's nothing that's transitional in nature that provides support that is needed. As you know, we have an aging population with only three local nursing homes with limited beds. And one of the most important gaps and why I'm here tonight is that there is no not-for-profit organization in Richmond County or in the town of Port Hoxbury that has a mandate specifically to address housing from a broad perspective. And that has, has had a great impact because there have been a lot of opportunities that have come our way and we have not been able to access or capitalize on them because we don't have a not-for-profit organization. But the internal optimist in me always looks at the opportunities. I mean, we're laden with all kinds of barriers and gaps, but there's lots of opportunities because there has been a renewed commitment by the federal government to invest in housing. I have been seven years now working in the area and I have never seen a time when the issue of housing has had more importance. There's also a very strong interest in working collaboratively in the region. And that has been evident by the cooperation of both the town of Port Hoxbury and Richmond County in the coalition For the first um year and a half, it was co-chaired by myself and Brenda and for the past year and a half, it's been co-chaired with Amanda. So to me, there's a strong interest in working together. Um, there's also uh ways and opportunities to look at how we can integrate other components of an age-friendly community into housing. Um, there have been discussions about engaging with the private sector and we actually have members of the private sector that are on our coalition and bring an interesting perspective to the table. Uh, St. of Texas extension has been providing some very strong leadership in the last year on the community housing sector. And they're gonna be moving forward with a phase two of a project and are looking at the creation of a provincial body which would support rural communities and all communities around community housing. And when I say community housing, that's predominantly the not-for-profit sector housing. Um, Cape Breton Partnership has been supporting research on housing. Um, the province, as you probably are all aware, has just issued a request for proposal that has gone out and they are going to be supporting municipalities with doing some housing market research. And recently, the uh coalition partnered with Cape Breton University and the Affordable Housing Association in Cape Breton to do a service-based count to start collecting some regional data and the results of that will be available this spring. That service-based count is going to give it, give us a better indication of people who are experiencing homelessness or who are in precarious housing situations. So why I'm here this evening is that we as an organization for several months and for the past year have been talking about the need for a regional not-for-profit housing entity. As I mentioned earlier, we're missing out on opportunities and we're not able to move forward on a number of key housing uh needs in our communities because we don't have such an organization. So while our coalition is a collection of people that are focused on, as I mentioned earlier, about issues around education, research and advocacy. We don't have a mandate, we're not set up as a not-for-profit organization to work directly with developers or to pursue funding opportunities. An example that would be um no, very familiar to you is the Walter Frasier School. And I have been following, as has the coalition, that very closely. And if there was a not-for-profit organization with a housing mandate that was in, in place in the community, they may be instrumental in being able to meet your particular goal of um housing and health. Um, so that, that just kind of demonstrates the need for this type of organization and that it, that would allow them to proactively look at generating opportunities for funding for both affordable and appropriate housing. Um, certainly, we would like a regional not-for-profit housing organization to have strong connections to the municipality because as uh I remember Mayor Savage once said, the federal government has the money, the provincial government has the policy, but the municipal government has the problem. So while municipalities may not be in the business of providing housing, they certainly are in the business of providing housing and I'm quite certain that every one of you receives a phone call a week about somebody that's experiencing a housing, housing need. Uh, one of another advantage of having a not-for-profit organization is that there would be dedicated staff with experience to work on housing development projects and to build the partnerships. Right now, all the work that's happening in housing in the straight Richmond area is being done off the side of our desk. People that have full-time jobs or are volunteers that are committed and passionate about this work, but it, we don't have the staff support to carry out this work. In other parts of the province, municipalities and pro- and the province have co- co-funded positions and it's been very helpful in terms of moving the air stick along. Um, if we did have a not-for-profit um organization like this one, we would be um in a position to be able to apply for funding projects. And of course, we know that if we did that, the community is gonna benefit. So what we're looking at is a joint effort between the town of Port Hoxbury and Richmond County because we've already established that we have very strong connections around the housing file with both municipal units. And that we would um be able to leverage uh a better response because if you combine the population of Richmond County and the town of Port Hoxbury, there's a lot of synergy between these two entities as well. It would also um demonstrate that there's a partnership and a willingness to work with, when we go to the provincial and federal government. Um, if we could attract more resources, it would lead to more staff and it would create all kinds of opportunity to, to stop the flow of people leaving the area, maybe help to attract more people to return to the area. Look at all kinds of housing options that will support a whole range of people that with the greatest, greatest need. So just by way of wrapping up, because I know that your time is precious and you may have some questions. Why I'm here today is that I'm looking for council support in principle for the formation of a regional not-for-profit organization. Uh, we'd like to um, at this point in time, just ask that you uh have opened your door for future options to even find a way that you may participate in some way in creating the mandate for that organization. And because we're in March, also for the consideration of including funds in your budgetary process to cost, possibly cost share a position. Um, I'll be making the same ask to Port Hoxbury when I meet with them on April fifth and maybe if we could actually uh co-share or co-share a funded position with the province. We've already had kind of put a seed in uh Trevor's um mind uh at a meeting last week about our interest in moving forward with this and asked if he potentially might be able to support us in some startup costs associated with that and then maybe look towards how the province can also help with some core funding. But uh, I can tell you right now, unless we are committed to um forming an organization like this, uh, the train is gonna get to you to leave the, the station and we're not gonna be on it. We're missing it opportunity upon opportunity and unless we actually jointly start looking at trying to find some staff support on this work, um, we're not gonna be able to move the art stick very long and the people in our communities are gonna continue to have housing needs unmet. So that about wraps it up. That I certainly, as always, would welcome any question that somebody might have of me.
Awesome. Thank you, Celeste. Um, and uh, and thanks for uh, thanks for taking on the, the, you know, agreeing to do this presentation. If uh, I think it's, you do a much better job of explaining some of that than I ever, ever could. So really appreciate it. Um, uh, so counselors, do you have any questions for Celeste at this time? Okay, so would folks be agreeable to um providing, I guess, making a motion of support uh for a nonprofit? Okay, so sorry, Deputy Warden, you had a question?
Literally putting my hand up, so, so it's okay. I forgive you. Um, I think my question really um, you know, is reflected in, in the budgetary. You know, certainly I would, uh, you know, I'm happy to make a motion for the support for the formation of an NBO. I know Warden, you and I have chatted about that previously, that that's something that we needed, know that needed to happen in order for us to access some of this funding. Um, but I am, I'm more thinking about like the, the actual amount of money that would be appropriate if we wanted to fund a position. So I know, Celeste, you mentioned, you know, partnering with the town, partnering with the province. So I'm just hopeful that perhaps as a group, you can kind of uh hone in on exactly what the ask looks like in terms of the dollar value because you don't wanna over budget or under, you know, or under budget, mostly under budget because then if you're just a little short of the position that you're looking for. So I, I think that would be my only suggestion is happy to refer it to budget, but I think that the more information that the housing coalition can provide in terms of like a specific dollar value that you'd like us, like us to consider, that that makes the decision-making a bit easier. So. Um, but you know, just the work that you, you all have done, like you said, from the side of your desks is, is really incredible as it is and and housing is a huge issue. And so I'm really excited to see it move forward and, and to, and as a council for us to support it.
So. Well, I mean, you, you know, you could fund the entire position.
No, no, no.
Because if that was what you were inclined to do, like, don't, don't let me stop you for God's sakes. Um, that would, that would, well, listen, I am crazy and I'm crazy about housing. And um, but again, with no guarantee from the province because their budget deliberation will always come later. Um. I know that there, there um, there are opportunities out there. So yeah, we could certainly put the figures together of what that might look like in, in a perfect world and a cost-sharing agreement. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, just to give us a ballpark, that's usually the biggest piece, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, you know, I recognize, I think we were at the point where no one else was really having any questions, but if they do, obviously, that'd be fine, but I would absolutely make a motion for us uh to provide our support to the coalition for the formation of an NBO really need to have.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll definitely second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Digdon. Is there any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. And it looks like we'll have some homework to do, Celeste, on budgetary numbers and all that good stuff. So, okay.
I think, yeah, I'd be happy to stay on the call in case there's um people from the gallery who have questions during question period. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much and uh we really appreciate you taking the time, like I said, to do that presentation this evening. It's um, it was really extremely helpful and informative. So. Okay, so um, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda and it is over to you, Dawn, to discuss the two thousand twenty-two spring heavy gar- heavy garbage collection.
Yes, every year at this time, of course, we uh, we plan our, our heavy garbage collection. And uh, of course, it's in the month of May. We don't have a uh, an approved budgetary amount for that. So we always bring it forth to council so that council is aware of it and uh, and approves the actual process so that, you know, there, there are no delays. Um, Chris, you, you, I'm sure you folks read Chris's uh memo and uh it's essentially the same thing each year. It's the same, same ask from, from staff to uh, have council approve that. Um, I know he's indicated there ninety to a hundred thousand. Um, I just worry about those numbers uh likely gonna fluctuate now that we had, you know, the recent uh, the recent increases in the, in the fuel prices. Um. I mean, we could we could, we could uh, approve it in principle and then uh, once we get the information from uh uh, process the tender and then it'll be approved at the next council meeting, then we can uh, get the tenders in and, and bring that information back to council through a uh, through a, through email. Just to let you know what, what the uh, what the tenders are gonna be, are gonna look like. Um, however, we do need the, the approval now to, to, to move forward. And it's, it's all about the timing. So we could have it all done roughly around the first week. Uh, have the, have the garbage collection started the first week of May like we always do.
Okay, thanks, Dawn. And so, and to clarify then, so these, the pricing that he's used there, the ninety to a hundred is, it doesn't include like these latest really upswings in gas prices. Yeah.
Yeah, I think he likely would have taken some into consideration. So I think, I think at March second, there were a couple, maybe one or two increases. I mean, we've had two since then. And well, one, and I think there's another one coming up this evening. So um.
Yeah.
Maybe ten percent, even ten percent higher than what he's estimated.
Okay. Okay. Um, so would counselors be comfortable then at this point, making a motion to proceed um as for the recommendation of staff, heavy garbage?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second there?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks a lot, Dawn. And thanks to Christopher's work on that as well. Um, okay, so the next item on our agenda, I just lost my agenda here for a second. So. All right. So next item are on our agenda are acknowledgements. And, and so I do have a few uh that I wanted to bring forward this evening. Um, the first is uh the winners of our February outdoor challenge the municipal recreation department held. Um, the total hours outside. So this was, this was a challenge where you would download the, you know, a form and then you would log your hours outside during the month of February. And it obviously did its job. There were eight hundred and ninety-three hours logged uh by uh the participants in the month of February alone. So I, I thought was pretty impressive. Um, and so uh, the winners of, in various categories, so for the children's category, zero to twelve, the winner was Luke Tanner. For youth ages thirteen to eighteen, was Elise, Elise Verlage. Uh, adults nineteen to fifty-four was Bettina Calery. Uh, seniors fifty-five uh was Laina Leonel Boudreaux. And then the family category was uh, the winners were Courtney, Ellie and Mason Landry. So thanks to those folks for, for participating. Um, it even, it even incented me to get outside in the month of February. So it was a, it was a win. It was a fun thing to do, to beat the winter blues. Uh, so congratulations to the winners. Um, also want to congratulate our volunteer of the month. This uh, this month is Andre Sampson of Lordways. And I know uh, Counselor Brent Sampson, you'd be well familiar with Andre's work in the community. Um, she is a tireless volunteer and uh and I think she just seems to be at the heart of just about everything going on in, in Lordways. So uh, so congratulations to Andre and I just wanna thank her for the work she does. I don't know, counselors, uh, Counselor Brent, did you wanna add anything to that? I, this, I just got the information today about volunteer of the month. We will have some social media later as well on it. Okay. All right. Um, so then the next uh thing I wanted to mention in terms of acknowledgements is a congratulations to Tyler Mathis. He has been selected after a competitive process as the president and CEO of the Cape Breton Partnership and Regional Enterprise Network. Certainly no stranger to this table, I haven't worked with the partnership since two thousand nineteen. Um, he had originally been the uh Economic Development Officer with the CBRM REN, but most recently has worked more in this region as Director of Economic Development. So uh, exciting news to see that um a replacement has been found in a permanent basis for Carla Arsenal. And um, just congratulations to Tyler and um, I know I'm looking forward to continuing to work with him. Um. The next acknowledgement I had is that of course tomorrow, March eighth, is International Women's Day. So this year's theme is break the bias. It's a call to action to collectively call out gender bias, discrimination and stereotyping each time you see it. So tomorrow, I'm gonna ask everyone um to strike the International Women's Day two thousand twenty-two pose, which is cross your arms like this and share your break the bias image of video resources or whatever you have going on, on social media using the hashtags, hashtag IWD two thousand twenty-two and hashtag break the bias to encourage uh people to commit to helping forge a more inclusive world. And there's more information about all of those, about all, all of the ways you can participate International Women's Day uh at their website, internationalwomensday.com. So any questions on any of those items or comments from counselors? Or additions? Okay. Um, so hearing that, I'm wondering um, at this stage, if we could get a motion just to ask staff to recognize those acknowledgements on our social media uh kind of at the appropriate time as, as they see it with, with counselors be in favor of that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second there? Thanks, Counselor Digdon. Any further discussion?
Question?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Lots going on and lots to celebrate. It's a good thing. Um, so I'll move us on to the next agenda items. And the first um that I have is acting collectively. I just wanted to give counselors a quick update on this project because things are continuing to move along with it. You'll recall that we were selected, successfully uh chosen by Dow to participate in their acting collectively research project. Um, it's that, that's the pilot project. Um, it's bringing kind of an innovative approach to gathering data on the needs of and available resources for our community. Um, for, for older adults in our communities to age well. Um, the project is focused on, on, on aging well in communities and aging well in place. Um, so as I mentioned, the project's proceeding, both Dorothy Bernard and I attend the regular project meetings with representatives from Alhousy, uh, Victoria County and Inverness County, which were the other two municipalities selected. Um, and Dorothy, of course, representing the seniors take action coalition. Part of the project will include doing assessments with uh older adults on the services that they need to connect to. Um, so a big thank you to Michelle McPhee, our senior safety and social inclusion coordinator and to Claire Doyle of Alma DM, who have both agreed to take the initial round of training that will be coming up later this month. So this is just a really stay tuned for updates and just wanted to let counselors know that that project is, is proceeding. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, so the next item I had on the agenda was an electric charging vehicle, an electric vehicle charging station uh marked for air shaft. So um, so as you'll recall, So as you'll recall from one of our previous meetings, we did ask staff to look into three locations. One at Lucky Cast Pointe Show and the Lewesdale Arena to potentially have electric vehicle charging stations installed. We did not include air chat at that time because we understood there was already a charging station located there. However, we have since found that it's private. Now, even since then again, we also, staff had been proceeding with looking at assessing those other locations. And so far, I think what they have found out is that they would need like written response and essentially permission from properties that are not owned by us in order to proceed even to respond to the the RFP from the Clean Foundation to have to have those funds awarded to the county to get to get those stations installed. So we haven't received responses from Lucky Cast or DNR, which would be for Pointe Show Beach. So we have received a memo from our Public Works Director, Chris, with a recommendation to push this to our strategic planning discussions. He's citing the tight timelines. The deadline is March eighteenth, I think, for the Clean Foundation RFP. And also, we need we need to be identifying where the budgetary resources would come to match those dollars if we were successful with the Clean Foundation RFP. And and also the fact that these stations are not currently on our five-year plan. So I guess I'm just seeking some instruction from council on how they would like staff to move forward or not. Do we want to include air chat as a location? And, you know, if so, you know, would we be proceeding with the RFP, or would we want to push this to our strategic planning and add to our five-year plan at that time? So and to budget. So just kind of thoughts from councillors. Counselor Digdon?
And so I tend to agree with Chris. It would be nice to, I guess, move it to our, you know, our strategic five-year plan. At the same time, I think if we're going to look at putting a a site near shit, what better place than Reddick Communality or, you know, just below with that at that little parking lot that we made. It might be a location, I mean, we would have to check obviously with, you know, with the higher ups to see if that's, if that location works for them for a station, but again, we own the property, so what better spot? And it's on on the main street near shit, so if somebody wanted to go eat, they have options. If somebody wanted to go to school for a walk down to the waterfront, they have options as well, so.
Okay. Okay, thanks, councillor. So I think I'm getting from that, though, that you think maybe we should kind of push this to budget and five-year plan and strategic planning discussion.
I do, I believe it. I believe Eric's that's a great location, and that that's one that we could choose because we own the property, but I still, I think we have to put a lot of thought and work into it to make sure that we get it right. So, yeah, I would, I would like to push it to the
Okay.
Budget deliberations and our strategic planning.
Okay. Alright, any other comments? Okay, Councilor Brent Sampson.
Yeah, I think if if there is any opportunity, whether or not we're able to get through with with all of what we wanted, I I would be more in favor or more inclined to try and do what we can, whether it's a, you know, it's a very good opportunity from the the government to get, you know, substantial amount of funding, so as to cut the costs for the municipal taxpayers. I assume there will be some coming in the future as well. I mean, this is gonna, this is gonna happen more than once, but I I think we should take advantage of what we can now, but maybe also look at it for the future if there are some some areas we can't can't hit with the first round.
Okay, thanks, councillor. So you'd be maybe, you know, so I so I guess part of the part of the issue, right, is that it would take quite a bit of time, you know, or I guess maybe more time than we originally anticipated to get that written and documented permission to access, install, and operate the charging infrastructure on somebody else's land, which would kind of narrow down our locations to the Lewesdale Arena if we were going to probably want to meet the timeline. For this round anyway, to your point, Councilor Sampson, I feel like, yeah, let's continue to work on it, but I would is that would something like that work, do you think, when it proceeds?
Yeah, I mean, I think if there are ones that we're able to proceed with, I think it'd be better to do some rather than one. Ideally, I mean, we'd like to see those three or four spots all done, but if we're not able to, I think it it may be in our best interest to to proceed with what we can at this point in time and and hope for another funding source in the future.
Okay, thank you. So I see councillor Digdon has his hand up, but I feel like Deputy Warden did and then put it up. It looked like it was kind of went up and then down, so maybe I'll go to you first, Deputy Ward.
It was up and then down and up and down. You're right. It just like I hit the button like three times. Sorry about that. I I would claim, I would tend to to think similar to councillor Sampson in terms of, you know, air chat and the rink are both municipally owned properties, so we don't need permissions for those. I think the funding is is lovely. I do think there'll be more to come, but that doesn't, you know, I don't expect one for one group of funders will exclude us from another group of funding. You know, I certainly take Chris's point in terms of, you know, not on our capital plan, blah, 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 but we've talked about this previously, like that things sometimes creep into your capital plan unannounced, you know, and and we have that flexibility. It's not a huge amount of money. It's not like our capital plan is for, you know, our capital fund is for, so there's money there for it for it. And I think that, you know, the world has changed quickly. It's changing quickly, and we need to, we need to move with it. I mean, I also recognize for Chris's briefing note, you know, that there's potentially, he can't get it done by the March thirteenth deadline, and that's not a him problem. That's just the whole getting the information that he needs to prepare it, and then we need to also approve it, right? So there are a whole bunch of timeline pieces there that I I think are concerning. So I I guess all of that long-windedness is to say, I would love to see us push hard to try to get an application put forward for air chat and the rink. It's the, you know, if our portion of it seems reasonable. And then continue to to think about what other locations might be suitable through the strategic planning process and then incorporate those into the budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Deputy Warden. So again, councillor Sampson, I I see your hand up, but I think councillor Digdon was already in the queue there. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, so I I guess, and I I would be in support of it as well. I guess my only, you know, I got a lot of feedback from our last meeting, and some of it was was location, location, location. You know, one of it said, who wants to park at a Richmond Arena and wait forty-five minutes or an hour in the middle of nowhere kind of thing, and then who wants to park at Pointe Show Beach or drive to Pointe Show Beach in the middle of winter when you can barely drive because of the roads? So again, I I know, I know the funding is there now, but I don't believe the funding is going anywhere if if the province and everybody else is moving forward, and they're they're definitely going to be pushing the funding. I would just hate for us to spend, you know, our our money and put it in a location that really isn't going to benefit us in any way. So if we were looking to push one that, you know, will benefit us, then I would say definitely the one Reddick Communality site itself is probably a.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I I think I know what councillor Digdon is referring to, but I think the 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 point was maybe missed by people that these were locations where people would be spending considerable amount of time at the arena. Often times, people may be there for several hours or the beach, and even in the winter, although, you know, I know there's a lot of people walk down there, but it wouldn't, these aren't the type of chargers that I don't believe people would be going as much specifically just in the middle of a trip. These are, you know, the mid-grade ones, so they're more something people plan around when they're planning to spend a considerable amount of time somewhere anyway. If we were looking at the rapid chargers, then having them in maybe slightly more out of the way locations wouldn't probably make as much sense, but considering the type we're looking at, I think it does. But my only other comment was I didn't know if the CAO wanted to add anything to this, or did you have any comment on this?
Yep.
So I did send that out today for you folks to review it, and the way I look at it is, and Chris is is explaining it sort of, he's trying to, he's trying to to not make it seem as though we can't do those other ones, but but timing is just, is just, is not, is against us right now. We've actually actually spoken to the to an engineer, and 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 he's working on the Richmond Arena one right now. If we decided that we thought maybe air chat might be a a great option, we probably still wouldn't have time for that one either. The work's already underway for the arena, so once, once we get that information, the 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 engineering costs were were minimal, so we decided to go ahead with that that plan anyway. The the Pointe Show and and the Picasa one was 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 definitely out of the question. There would just be no way that we could get those any kind of numbers completed for the 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 application deadline. So right now, we're essentially just working on the the arena one. But absolutely, if if council wanted to pursue any others, like like I've heard it mentioned a couple of times, it's very likely that there will be more funding going out, and maybe, you know, council might consider one of the more faster chargers. You know, over, you know, with with respect to a five-year plan and and maybe some of the level-two chargers for a shorter-term plan.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Don.
And I think the final thing that I wanted to say on that was, once we get that information from the engineer with respect to fees associated with putting a charge station at the arena, we'll forward that information off to you folks, and if there's an application process that you want us to continue with, we can do it.
Okay. So so then the engineering firm is really just working on the Richmond Arena site right now. There would not be time because we didn't get permissions back in time from the other two locations, and then also not time to add air chat as a location for this particular round to be able to get that information back, so I guess the decision is, do we want to push, you know, do we want to, you know, instruct staff to continue working on the Richmond Arena location with the intent to submit before the March eighteenth deadline, or do we want to push the whole thing to to budget the capital plan, strat planning? Counselor Digdon?
Yeah, I would definitely say we we keep allowing staff to continue. It's great that they actually took the initiative. Not that they don't always, but that they did take the initiative and get it, get it underway so that we might be able to meet the the timeline, so you know, the saying, one is better than none. So, yeah, let's let's start with one and see what kind of numbers they bring back and hopefully get it done.
Okay. So would somebody prepared to make a motion for staff?
Yeah, I was I was going to say, if we need a motion, then I would make the motion that we we have staff continuing on the with the engineering firm that they've that they have currently. And I guess moving forward with the
With the Clean Foundation RFP?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, could I have a second there on that motion? Counselor Brad Sampson? Alright, any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Alright, thanks, everyone. And again, so I guess to your point on, we'll we'll watch our emails for future updates on that to get the details from you guys. That's great. Thank you so much. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the Richmond Port Hoxbury Joint Park update. So I wanted to add this to the agenda because the commission has met a couple of times now. At the last meeting of the Joint Park Commission, we did, we discussed, we really are discussion centered on determining next steps for potential development of the property that is jointly owned, and so the problem, I guess, that we were running into right off the bat when we were talking about opportunities is, you know, we really without a clear and modern vision, we couldn't, we didn't really have a grasp of what was within the air to the possible for for this particular area. So we had, I think, general consensus around the table that the commission should investigate the option of hiring a consultant to do assessment or more of a conceptual plan for the property that would address the priorities of both councils. And so, you know, of course, that kind of work will require a budget, the amount of which I can tell you, we just don't know at this time. But it's likely in terms of how that would roll out is that councils would kind of the representatives on the commission would go back to their councils to seek one, seek an equal amount of budget resources in the next fiscal, which could potentially be leveraged with provincial and or federal dollars to conduct the planning. I'm thinking specifically a COA has a consulting advisory sort of program that that, you know, we could be taking advantage of to leverage those funds. I, you know, just from having gone through conceptual plans like these in the past for communities, and, you know, my my estimate is that budgetary ask coming back to council would be in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range, but we we won't know for certain until we create a request for proposals to conduct the work, and so I just wanted to give council a kind of an update on where things were at, because I do anticipate this is going to come to our budget table as an another pressure, another priority, but also another opportunity that that we can be responding to. And I also wanted to offer the, you know, the opportunity for councillors to ask any questions about our discussions at the commission. I'm happy to answer them if you have any. Okay. So quiet. Okay, that's great. We're moving right along. Next item on the agenda, then, we're going to move into correspondence. We've got several grant requests, actually. I guess we'll begin, and actually, maybe right off the bat for councillors, the River Bourgeois Community Services Society grant. My understanding, watching my email today, was that this one would not actually be ready for this evening. The latest information was that, I think Jason had a couple of additional questions for for Sharon Childers, who submitted the grant application, and she she wasn't, she wasn't feeling well and wasn't able to get them to him in time. And she was actually indicated that it's really fine if if this gets deferred to April. It's not time-sensitive. So we can probably defer that item. Sorry, Jason, I'm just seeing you there now. I wasn't sure if you were with us on the call. I probably stole your thunder. No. Okay, so my understanding is we won't be evaluating that one this evening. Is that correct, Jason?
Yeah, that that's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um. So then we'll start with the Friends of St. John's Airshot Society. Is this a type-one infrastructure grant? Request?
Excuse me, Warden?
Yeah?
I think it's probably important, we did receive an email today, but just in the event that perhaps councillors didn't have a chance to see that, an update on the balances in our funds, may, it may be a good idea just to review that both for the gallery, but also for councillors who maybe haven't seen that today. It just helps to frame the discussion because we are coming to the end of our budget year.
Very true, very true.
Right, and and I guess the other thing I would say to that is, we did talk briefly at the last, at our regular council meeting, that really this was our last opportunity technically to discuss grants for the fiscal year. But that, you know, I I guess I I would, I would just caution us that that we may, maybe we don't want to just make sure we spend all the money today, because we could technically have grant applications that could come in, and you had mentioned the possibility of a special meeting if was, if it was required, and I certainly have not not hope, I I'm not saying that we're, we would do that for sure, but I guess I'm asking a question, would that still potentially be possible? The CFO had the ability to look at those applications if it was timely before year-end, or should we be looking to to not necessarily like pushing to spend all the money, but should we not be concerned about that as a factor in our decision?
Yes, that's that's a good question, Deputy Warden, so and and I guess my question to the CFO would be after tonight, Jason, is there is there any more grants that you see in the horizon here in the hopper coming from now till the end of our fiscal year?
Well, as of right now, I only have one that's currently in the hopper that was received, but it's similar to the River Bourgeois one where it's not on the agenda tonight because there was, there was still some questions being asked, and there's still some backup that needs to be provided. It's possible that that some more could come in, but sometimes it's slow, sometimes it's not, but I assume organizations could apply before now, March thirty-first.
Thank you.
So we would, you know, normally our process, though, is we review a committee of the whole, and then we kind of come back to council. Regular council gives us a two weeks of sober second thought. You know, so we would just have to be careful about that. Potentially needing to call a special council meeting, I guess, if we wanted to give ourselves of course, a special council meeting, if we approve, and then it's 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 approved, so just something for councillors to think about, that, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't allow for that two-week sort of period. Okay, so so that's a great suggestion, though, Deputy Warden, in terms of giving a summary of the amount of funds remaining to be spent. So, Jason, I don't mean to put you Uh remaining to be spent, um so Jason, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but this is your spreadsheet, I'm wondering if you would mind speaking to it?
Yeah, that's fine, um so basically I provided a spreadsheet today, which is an update, but I figured because like Deputy Ward said, we're getting to the end of the fiscal year. So basically, um on the first page of the spreadsheet, uh just shows the, you know, the original allotments that were approved, that budget. And then the next line is is the grants that have physically been paid out uh up to today. Um so that the the total was sixty five, sixty thousand five hundred at the end of the first line, eleven thousand paid out up to today. And then the second last line is amounts committed but not paid, so we have twenty two thousand in additional grants that are approved by council, but are just waiting to be paid out. Uh so the the numbers down the bottom are the balances that you have left in your funds. And in the type four fund, uh so the total would be twenty seven five. The second page is just the backup of the twenty two thousand showing which grants have been approved but not not paid out. So pretty straightforward, so if you, I guess if you look at the grants uh tonight, if we if we slide the River Bourgeois Community Services Society off, there's twenty five, five and ask. And basically twenty seven five uh available, um however, of course. Councillors agreeing to take money out of their specific funds would be dependent on there being enough money in total, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Jason. All right, so um so with that being said, I guess we'll, let's jump into our first grant uh request, it's from the Friends of St. John Arashat Society. It is for a type one um infrastructure uh grant, um. So I'm just gonna open this for comments, I don't, I don't think councillors, you don't need me to kind of go through and summarize these, do you, or or would you like a little bit of? Okay, so Deputy Warden?
Um and perhaps the CFO could help me with this, so when I was looking for the documents here, they, their request to us was five thousand. And in their grant application, it said five thousand, but they also had a document attached, which was a budget. And when you looked at that budget, it actually showed like they were gonna ask us for two thousand. So and and I know the difference was between sort of like what they would fundraise. There was like a three to thousand dollar difference between what they would fundraise and then a three thousand dollar difference between what we would fund. And so I just, I don't know if that was mentioned to you, or or and you may not even notice, it was a total fluke, I think, that I saw it myself, so I just wondered.
Yeah, so the the um the application is actually the correct budget that they provided. Uh but you are right, uh I've had some discussions with the group uh up until uh today or Friday. Uh I think initially they were talking about asking for two thousand dollars. Um but what, through discussions with the group, what they're unsure of is if the other levels of funding are gonna be approved. So they were kind of in a way short, potentially shortchanging themselves, I guess, by asking for two thousand, so they revised the application. Uh from the original submission, but they must have just forgot to uh revise that, because again, with these grants, it would be up to. Five thousand, right, it's not a guaranteed five thousand, it's fifty percent of cost up to five thousand, so. Again, once you back out, PTHST and those types of things, they wouldn't be able to get any more than than they have spent, of course.
So and and to be specific, this is, it's for the roof project specifically, right, so um yeah. Um and just like keeping in mind too for councillors, um I believe this building is a heritage designated building. Um and so, you know, the type of work that gets performed on it is gonna have to, you know, maybe conform a little bit more to that heritage designation. Um so like, for instance, I don't think they could just slap a steel roof on it, right, so. Um not that that would be any less expensive, probably the opposite, but uh but it is just something for consideration by council. It's a heritage building. Any other comments? Okay, so I guess um at this stage, I'd be looking for a motion to uh. Approve the grant request to five thousand dollars for St. John's.
Oh, so I'll make that motion, Madam Warden, and uh when it comes to uh the breakdown of it. Uh are we looking at the some some district fund allocations?
Yeah, I mean, so you you can see the amounts um for uh, you know, for each of the districts, so. Uh you know, we could look at doing some from across, or uh the regional fund, I think, still has. Uh twenty thousand in it as well, twenty twenty thousand five, so.
Yeah, so uh so District One still has a balance of uh twenty two fifty, so. Uh I I would, I would uh put in from District One, I would put in uh twelve hundred and fifty.
Okay. So with the proposal, are you suggesting uh Sean twelve fifty from your district fund and then the rest from regional?
Yes, that's that's the motion I would make, unless there's our councillors that wanna uh put in from their district fund, that would be my motion, yes.
Okay, so, okay, so uh councillor Diggum.
So, sorry, uh every time I hit the button, it went down, the uh, yeah, so I guess the uh. Uh again, we have to consider the organization and uh and the funding, and I still have uh, yeah, I guess seventeen fifty in my fund, so. Um you know, at this point in time, I guess I would be okay with, uh you know, I guess putting five hundred from from District Two's.
Okay. So uh so twelve fifty from District One, five hundred from District Two, and then thirty two fifty from reach from the regional. Okay. All right, so um would you, someone care to make a motion to that effect, then?
Yeah, Madam Warden, I'll make that motion, so.
Okay.
More, twelve hundred and fifty from District One, seven fifty from District Two, uh five hundred from District Two. Thirty two fifty from regional fund, sorry, Mike, you didn't mean to drive it to fifty, oh, you might.
All right, thank you, could I have a second here on that?
I'll take that motion.
Thanks, councillor Diggum. So any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, uh thanks, everyone, so uh the next item on the agenda. Is uh the Little Harbor Pasture Cooperative Limited, this is a type four regional health general grant. Um and they are uh requesting an amount of money to do some work to the. Uh I guess the the pasture itself and the infrastructure there, um so there's detail provided in the package. And their request is for ten thousand dollars. Um that they will use to leverage uh an addition additional funds from the Nova Scotia Department of Agriculture. Community pasture support program, forty thousand. Um I will tell, I will mention to councillors, I received a call from Jeff Hennessy with NSDA. Um about this uh week or so ago, and um and, you know, he he he's. Indicated that it, you know, was, it was very likely that they would be able to leverage these funds. Um so, you know, I I think too, there's something I should have mentioned in the last grant, the other option that council has is you cannot, we can always make a motion that the funds be provided. You know, contingent on additional funds being being leveraged as as presented, but um. But in any case, I just wanted to let you know that that's where uh kind of the background information was on this item. Um the the applications come in because the uh the pasture is, uh the cooperative is uh has been operating for. Quite some time and and is responsible for the care of the pasture, so. So any questions on this one? Councillor Brad Sampson?
Yeah, so some my comments here on this, I think it, the, you know, it works well with where we talked about food security and all. You know, farming within Richmond County and so on, and we spoke about this with the Panget Britain Food Hub especially. At this time, uh I know there are, it's showing four thousand left within my district fund. Um I would be more than willing to put that four thousand in from my district fund to support this project. Um that that way, the remaining six thousand could come out of the general fund.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brad Sampson, Deputy Warden?
Um I I had a question on this one as well, which maybe CFO can help me with. So in the application, it does say that they are eligible for ninety percent funding on eligible project contracts. So ninety percent of fifty thousand is actually forty five thousand, so I was just a little confused because then in the bottom. Where they have the the funding sources, they had forty thousand from the NSDA, and then they had ten thousand from us to equal the fifty. So I'm just uh just not sure if the full ten is required to get them to their project goal.
Yeah, so I talked to the president um a few times about this, it's a similar situation, uh in the sense that um. I think he stated in his application that they they're currently in the process of getting firmer quotes. And that they need to apply to the provincial funding by the end of March. So they're they're estimating that it's gonna be fifty thousand, but they feel it's gonna be quite a bit more. They're confident, as the Warden kind of said, that, you know, that that the province is gonna be on board with this, and it is ninety percent funding. I'm not sure if there's a max or not, but he seemed confident that that uh if the project was more than fifty, that they were gonna get the ninety percent. So again, they are, they are firm on asking for the ten thousand dollars, but again, it would be a situation where it would be up to ten thousand dollars, so of course. Whatever they got approved from the province, we would only put in the other five, the other uh ten percent up to.
Okay, so potentially the motion could be worded that way, that um, you know, we would approve. Um ten percent towards this project, up to ten thousand dollars, four thousand of which would come from the councillor Brad Sampson's district fund and the rest from regional.
You could put a contingent on the provincial funding too, if you wanted, it's really up to council, but he seemed confident as well, like you said, that. That they're gonna get this money.
Yeah.
Yeah, all that makes sense to me, I mean, and with the price of everything going these days, it would be not, uh. It would not be uncommon that their that their plan for fifty thousand would work. Uh I would also echo councillor Sampson's comments in terms of food security, I I just touched base with him quickly today on it, just. To get an idea, because I didn't, wasn't familiar with the organization, I mean, it's it's something to be doing more of, so, you know, I definitely would support that motion. So that being said, I would, I think councillor Sampson, you made the motion that I I think, and and if you read those pieces where you say ten percent. And.
Yeah, I know, I'm perfectly fine with that, I, yeah, I didn't read that, and just like, I I knew there was a little bit left extra in in my district fund, I was. You know, especially considering this is the last round of grant applications, I was more than willing to support this work well, Brian.
Yeah, I would I would second that. That's a motion.
Okay, so the motion has been put forward by councillor Sampson. Uh and seconded by the deputy warden to um provide uh ten thousand dollars or in funding. Uh or ten percent of their total project value, four thousand of which would come from councillor Brad Sampson's district fund. And six thousand from the general fund. It's multiple. Okay, any further discussion on that?
Intingent on them receiving the other funding as well, right?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I just didn't hear that in the motion reading.
Yeah.
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, uh so the next item on our agenda is the Rocky Bay Irish Club. Uh I have applied for type two activity grant fund, um five hundred dollars. Um so uh any discussion from councillors on this item? It's pretty, I think, pretty straightforward, um.
Yeah, I don't, uh, Freddie Man Warden, I don't have a discussion, but I'm uh definitely willing to take the uh. Five hundred dollars out of my uh district fund to uh. Take over the cost.
So that would be uh the district two, so five hundred, so you would use the full amount then, councillor Diggum?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so it would be five hundred dollars uh to support the Rocky Bay um. Irish Clubs, St. Patty's Day event for five hundred dollars, fully from uh councillor Diggum's district fund. So that's the motion, I think, my uh councillor Diggum, you've got on the table, okay, so uh could I have a second here on that motion?
I'm sorry, my move.
Thank you, councillor Brad Sampson, is there any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion was carried.
I would like to say that uh, oh, we all have in front of us, but that is for a St. Patty's Day uh dinner and music and uh. If anybody, if you haven't been to the Rocky Bay Hall, then I suggest you go, because it's a great time. And while, if you haven't, if you have never had the opportunity to eat one of their feasts, I guess, then uh you've been missing out all along, so. Grab yourself a ticket, get a hold of somebody from the Rocky Bay community and uh.
That's awesome, thank you, councillor Diggum.
And I will see you there.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is uh the Village Fitness Center Cooperative. Type four regional health general grant fund of uh request for ten thousand dollars, so um. Just to give folks a little bit of background, um on this is obviously a community response to um. To the closure of the privately owned gym in St. Peters, and I know this council has discussed, uh you know. Applications from other gyms in the past, um and, you know, we we did, we did talk about the fact that we didn't want the municipality to be in a situation where we were supporting. Um you know, uh one organization that would potentially take business away from a private sector organization. Um you know, I think um that had come up with the with IFIT in the past, and also um. Think all, you know, making sure that we're not funding like full on costs. To, you know, like we talked about with a community pastor, a ten percent leverage or a fifty percent or whatever, so. I I just wanted to remind folks that that had been some of the discussion around the table before, um. But uh but so this application is specifically to uh purchase. I mean, it was a little over ninety thousand dollars worth of equipment, I believe, um to set up the new gym, and the request is for ten thousand, so. Um so any comments or questions from councillors on this one? Oh, sorry, I don't, did not see whose hand went up first, I'm gonna go to Deputy Warden. Pick somebody, sorry.
I'm I'm so, I was so excited to see that they were able to get their application in so quickly, um. I really enjoyed their presentation, and I applaud the members of the community who leapt into action so quickly. When the gym um closed down and are providing this great opportunity for the folks. Not only of the immediate St. Peters area, but of course filling over into into my district, and also for people who come visiting from away, and. Uh so I wholeheartedly support uh their application. Uh I have a fair bit of funds left in my district, and I would be willing to put up two thousand, but at this point, we only have forty two fifty left in our type four. So it's definitely gonna take uh some district funds to make to make this one happen, if people are interested in that. Um and I would definitely put, you know, two thousand of the forty five hundred I have left, and and maybe more if needed, but uh. I'll I'll let others to speak to that, but I am absolutely in support of that.
Next, Deputy Warden, councillor Diggum?
Yeah, so I I guess my concern is, and I'm definitely in support, and I I really applaud the the work they done to get it to council so fast. My only issue, I guess, is um, you know, less than three months ago, we. And I don't like to say the word rejected, but I believe we're sitting with the same discussion, as you say, with the IFIT, when they put an application forward. And I do know at that time, the other gym was privately owned, however, now it seems like we refused one. One gym, and now we're going to support the other, so we just um. Again, I caution us, because if we do that, and next week they decide to open a gym. You know, in Luzell or in Forshu, or do we do we start supporting that gym as well? So I believe, you know, the fundamental part and the uh supporting process and helping them out, where we can, but again. Uh budgetary wise, is that something we really want to uh get into is giving money to the gym? Considering we had this discussion less than three months ago and rejected the first one.
So councillor Diggum, I don't think we rejected it, we gave them two thousand dollars. It was a little less than.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
Asking for.
I I believe, but I I thought the, if I'm not mistaken, to come out of the district fund, not out of our capital fund, in which they were looking for a.
Well, it's, it's the, so the di- district funds are just allocations, right? Uh they're.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not, none of it's, like, it's all, it's all a grant fund, it's not, it's not really like a capital. I guess I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, because we didn't reject it, like our council agreed to support the project to the tune of two thousand. Because we didn't reject it, like our council agreed to support the project to the two thousand, and I know it came from the district funds. For sure. Um, deputy warden, did you still have a question?
Well, I mean, that's, I wanted to just comment that we did support it, uh perhaps. I know, I know Jason, the spreadsheet doesn't show who we paid. The money to, but I know you have it somewhere. I can see you searching your computer. Um, so maybe if you could comment with, you know, what were the funds that we did give them and and where were they taken from?
Yeah, I I believe that we, warden, it was simply just a thousand each from district one and district two.
Yeah, that's exactly what it was. I haven't noted in much. And so Red Sampson?
Yeah, I'm just trying, and I could be wrong here. I was just thinking procedurally. I'm not sure if we have the discussion after we have a second or a third. Generally, but I know in this case, I'm trying to figure out how the allocation would work, I suppose, which is a little bit difficult before having a second or a right.
Yeah.
But I didn't really make a motion. I just said that I'm here wanting to put up. Two thousand as part of a motion that I expected to come.
Yeah. Um, so. Uh, so I mean, and I I obviously would be willing to put it in the the remainder of my grant on this one, my fifteen hundred. Um, which would bring the total up to thirty-five hundred. Um, so and I I have to be honest with you, Jason, my math is a little. Uh, off of of the, because I've been keeping track of these grants as well, and I still had um. Eleven thou, even after the six thousand for the pasture and the thirty-two fifty for the St. John's. Uh, for from this evening, I still have like eleven hundred, eleven thousand two fifty left in that regional. But you've indicated it's less than that.
Yeah, I was thinking. Looking at the third, the 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 type four, I was showing a balance of thirteen five. So I deducted a thirty-two fifty into six thousand off of that to get to forty-two five.
Forty-two fifty, yeah.
Yeah, the forty-two fifty, sorry.
Yeah, I just.
Forty-two, that's forty-two five, Jason, we're gonna, we're gonna spend some more.
You're all.
Coming into this meeting, I had that number at twenty thousand five hundred, so I. I guess I'm just.
What was left?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we had. Uh, Lennox Passage, so the only, the only places that I've had drawing down from the regional fund. My understanding is we started off there with thirty-five thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
Because we, yeah, right. So I had five hundred from River Bois Waimea in September. Five thousand to the Areshat Development Association in September. Um, between Raising the Villages and Waterway, we had another five thousand in October. And then in February, forty-five hundred. Maybe my math, my math could totally be wrong. This wouldn't be the first time.
I'm showing the uh, I'm showing two thousand from the Pidapak.
Oh, okay, so that's where Vidobo went, but.
And then the other one that I have included in there is the um, as of right now, I have the cave written partnership one included in there. That's the straight of council gateway. Uh, that one was approved through council. It wasn't formally done through a grant request, but uh.
No.
We have it in that account right now.
So, but Vidobo is so, was already um. Was all, wasn't that already agreed to at budget time, like?
Uh, no, that one was, I think they had made a request and something tells me it got referred to for them to apply for a grant. But they did go through the grant process and apply and they got approved for two thousand. I just paid it out uh last week. So that's your two, I guess your two and your five.
Okay. So, yeah, so um. Okay, um, so the five thousand dollars then, that that's a big chunk um. That I I didn't realize was gonna be coming out of here, so I don't know councillors um. Like, I I assumed there was another place in in our budget that we were gonna be looking for that from, but. Uh, are we all okay with that five thousand from the gateway sitting in this fund? I just wanna.
I don't know, like, I just thought that if what didn't come through branch app, then. That's not where we come from, and we just need to make an adjustment somewhere in the budget. The rest of the.
So all this account, uh, the reason why we put it there is because this account contains all the funding contributions that were approved that budget. As well as, so that's where the type four sits, right? All the funding contributions that were approved that budget. Uh, plus all the grants that were done through applications. So there's really no results, I guess theoretically, to put it in the accounting system. That's not really important, I guess. I guess if you don't want it to be included in in these numbers tonight, then basically that account would just be over budget by five thousand. Which is not the end of the world. It's just that I haven't included it in the numbers for tonight because it was approved.
Right. Okay. Okay, so um.
So I guess.
All right.
I I guess where are we sitting, where are we sitting number wise, uh, what we have left between our districts and?
So we have thirty-five, uh, we have thirty-five hundred um sort of committed between uh count, deputy warden and I towards this project. In terms of councillors remaining monies, um, district one, there's seven fifty, district two, there's twenty-five hundred. Um, and in district five, there's.
I know, I think you're going.
Sorry, I'm going wrong. District one is a thousand, district two, seven fifty, and district three, twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then forty-two fifty left in the type four.
And forty-two fifty in the.
I guess there was, it was twelve thousand total and available before this grant.
Right.
So district, district two was how much?
Uh, seven fifty.
Where do you get the? It should have been seventeen fifty minus the five, should have been twelve fifty.
You put two five hundreds up.
And then the other.
Five hundred for uh Rocky Bay.
And then, yeah.
Five hundred for friends of St. John's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, like, I'll admit, kinda coming into this, I'm not, I'm I'm not really uh super comfortable with that. You know, not having realized that that five thousand is there, and Jason, I should have reached out to you to double check my numbers when I. Got your sheet today or whenever that was sent, um, I just never had a chance to, but. Um, you know, my feeling is that. You you know, I really appreciate deputy warden's uh investment there and and of course, uh, the the funds. There won't be any other projects coming for for uh, for this district, so I'm happy to support with fifteen hundred. Um, my feeling is that we should, you know, from the, from the regional fund, still just continue to support at the ten thousand dollar level. There, you know, they're left, if they can leverage ninety thousand dollars, a little over ninety thousand by an investment of ten. That's, that's pretty good. Sense on the dollar. Um, and so um, my feeling is we should go ahead and support with the sixty-five hundred from the jet, the regional fund. Uh, in any case, but uh, but I like, I appreciate comments on that for sure. Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, no, I'd be willing to put the five hundred from district one for sure. I just. Uh, I just don't, don't wanna spend it all just in case something arises in the next uh week or so, and we have a special meeting for district one. Uh, but I will be, uh, I would be willing to to put five hundred hours in uh. Recreation is important to everybody in Richmond County, right? So uh. I wish them all well and and hope they get this gym going and uh, so yeah, I'd be willing to uh, to to pledge to fire hurt for my district.
Okay, thank you. Uh, um councillor Jada?
Yeah, and uh, you know, as well, I guess I have uh, I have seven fifty left and there's no, like the fellow says, you can't take it with you, so uh. I'm going to uh, I'm going to pledge the uh, my seven fifty uh over to them to them as well and uh. You know, uh, it is a, it's a great investment. I just, like I said, the only thing I wanted to caution us was, you know, before and obviously moving forward then, yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Okay, Ken. Um, so what we have on the, on the table right now is a uh five hundred dollar investment from district one, seven fifty from district two. Two thousand from district three and for uh fifteen hundred from district four. Um, but I guess to make up the ten thousand, that would be a five thousand two hundred and fifty dollar investment from the regional type. For grants, um, which would overdraw our regional by a thousand dollars, given that the five thousand dollars from the gateway is in there. Deputy Warden?
So I I'm a little bit like, like Sean, you know, I don't like to uh deplete my entire district fund because I. I've uh, you know, I've contributed to a group, but really I'm not, there's been no groups from the area. It doesn't mean that it won't come and, and for me, that's why I'm trying to hold it a little bit, just in the event that something goes up. I've had a couple of inquiries past few weeks. And so I I just don't want to find myself with no funds specific to my district. I mean, I think, I think it's okay for us to be a thousand dollars over in that type four piece. Because of the five thousand dollars that, you know, we weren't really sure it was gonna come out of there. And also the fact that the likelihood that both. Councillor Sampson and I are going to have applications that will beat up our district funds. You know, I think as a, as a whole, in terms of the whole sixty thousand five hundred, I don't feel like it's. I don't feel like we're gonna be sixty-one thousand five hundred, and it's a thousand dollars, you know what I mean?
Okay.
So I think we should proceed with the district fund, so I think I'm ready for a motion. How's that?
Okay.
So here you go, so I move that uh we fund the Village Fitness Center. Uh, for the total of ten thousand, two thousand from district three. Fifteen hundred from district uh four. Five hundred from district one. Seven fifty from district two and fifty-two fifty from the type four pool.
Okay, thank you, deputy warden. Could I have a second or on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks councillor Dinkin. Is there any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, thanks everyone. Um, feeling a little bit like an auctioneer after that session. Councillor Sampson, I, maybe I could use some tips.
Oh, God, no.
All right, um, so next item on the agenda is correspondence for information purposes. Um, and it's from the Eastern Counties Regional Library, so they have provided us with a copy of their annual report. Um, Dawn, I'm not sure if you wanna give us any context about how this came in or the timing or um.
Yeah, they they usually send this to us on an annual basis and uh I just provided the council for their uh, for their review and their their information. That's.
Okay.
That's just, yeah, just. Something that happens each year.
Perfect, okay, thank you. So um. So unless anybody had, has questions on that item, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, so the next item is the review. Of checks issued February twenty-two. So do councillors have any questions on those uh the checks issued for twenty-two, February twenty-two? Okay, so hearing that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is the review of action items. From February fourteenth uh twenty-twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting. Um, I don't really have uh a question, but I did want folks to know. I believe I had an action assigned to me. Um. It was regarding the uh contacting Olivia Melnick, the regional director of Nova Scotia Early Childhood Development. Uh, to ask her to come and do a presentation to committee of the whole regarding the early development instrument, and I did make that request to Olivia today and just. Uh, forgot to to uh send an email to you guys to let you know, so, so that we can mark as complete for future dominant one. Um. Is there any other questions on the action items? Okay, so the next uh piece, we're into the items added to our agenda. Um, and I believe we had uh. Two items, it was the code of conduct policy. Um, and so we'll start with that one. Um, and just, this is just kind of for information purposes. So uh, you know, as as some folks would be aware, um, the municipality does have a code of conduct for elected councillors. It was approved by council in twenty-nineteen. You can find a copy of it at richmondcounty.ca. You just click on council policies and then choose the council category. To locate it on our website, it's near the topical list. The policy includes standards of conduct, responsibilities and other details. It also includes a process for looking into any potential issues. As they arise. Um, I think uh realistically, we can anticipate future change to the code. Uh, we discussed this as early as April twenty-twenty-one. I remember us talking about it because. The provincial government had announced amendments to the MGA to provide more transparency and increased accountability for local governments. Um, however, we didn't amend the policy at that time because I think the regulations are still in development. So once they're complete, um, we'll probably need to refer this back to policy by law to ensure it meets the new standard. Um, but just wanted to encourage any members of the public, uh, folks have questions about the code, encourage them to reach out to the local councillor or me and happy to discuss, so. Any other comments or questions on that? Okay, so next item on our agenda then um is uh the fifteen minute question period. Um, so we'll leave it open. I'll ask folks to either. Put up their hands or um pop notes in the chat. Uh, or the other option uh is to phone in. Um, and the phone in number is uh. Sorry, it's six four seven. Three seven four four six eight five. And the meeting ID is eight four seven four four nine oh five one seven five. Um, so again, I'm just gonna repeat that number. It's. Six four seven three seven four four six eight five. The meeting ID is eight four seven four four nine oh. Five one seven five. Okay, so in the meantime, I can see some hands up around the table and I apologize. I do not know who was first, so I'm gonna just start with Claire Doyle. So Claire. You can go ahead and feel free to turn your camera on if you like. You can go ahead with your question, Claire.
Okay, I don't seem to be able to undo my, my uh, my video, but.
Oh, that's okay. We can hear you loud and clear.
Start my video. Here we go.
There it is.
Here we go. So my name is Claire Doyle and uh I'm with the Senior Take Action Coalition. And I would like to introduce a question to council on their emergency measures preparedness plan this evening. So the emergency measures plan for the municipality, according to the municipal website, was enacted in two thousand fifteen. Since that period, we have had three severe storms. White one in twenty-eighteen, Dorian in twenty-nineteen. And a winter blast in twenty-twenty-one, which left citizens in our county with no power for several days. Uh, cell service was disrupted and citizens had to make use of comfort centers in Richmond County. In November twenty-nineteen, following two major storms. An emergency preparedness collaboration forum was organized and supported through. Uh, grant funding by the Dr. Kingston Memorial uh Community Healthcare Center in Lardwas. And citizens throughout the county were invited to come and evaluate the EMO plan to the council. And to take a look at, no. They they came to evaluate the EMO plan and to look at the strengths and weaknesses of the plan. And present then their findings to the council. So two meetings were organized and a summary of the results was forwarded to the council. And at that time, it was identified that the plan needed to be more comprehensive. And address issues of uh rapid spreading fires and flooding. As realized during the past two years. It needs, we need to address issues such such as the pandemic that we've just kind of coming through. And even more recently, the war and nuclear threats of what we're seeing these days. So my question this evening is a three-part question. Number one. When was the last time the municipal emergency measures bylaws of two thousand fifteen were reviewed and updated? And my second question. Uh, is council is in the process of a hiring an emergency management coordinator. And the position carries a big responsibility for the health, safety and welfare of all residents in the county. Especially our older population. The position listed is part-time. And in the past, according to the bylaws on page fifty-one. You list the second person as a paid assistant emergency management coordinator. Does that position still exist? And if not. Then why is the council not hiring a full-time person as opposed to a casual? And then number three. Is how confident is the council? That the present emergency measures plan presently in place. Meets the security needs of our residents. And especially our most vulnerable. That's my question. I have three. You wanna start?
Okay.
One. Number one. When was the last time the municipal emergency measures bylaws of two thousand fifteen? Number one, when was the last time the municipal emergency measures bylaws of two thousand fifteen were reviewed and updated?
Okay, so that's, that I can answer for you, Claire, the last time was just before Christmas, so it would have been end of twenty-twenty-one. Um, we may, went through and made, uh, several updates, a whole list of them. Um, and those changes were suggested by the province, um, so that, that would have been the last time those were made, um. I think your next question was, uh, was hiring the emergency management coordinator. I wasn't sure if you were asking if the, like, look, so the position does still exist, we're hiring.
Yeah, well, there, uh, uh, according to what I read, uh, there had been two part-time coordinators. One was Cecil Frost, and there was a second one in the Saint Peters area. Uh, that's what it says in the bylaws of, uh, on page fifty-one. But it, that might not exist now, I'm not sure, but I just wanted to ask, you, you have one part-time coordinator at the, at present?
Did you? There's a, there's, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Did you ever? And, and I mean, please, uh, CAO Marshon, you know, feel free to jump in if you have additional details on that, but my understanding is we have. One part-time position that we, that we have for that role.
Did you have two at, at some point in time, two part-time positions?
Yes, we did, we had, yes, we did, we had a, uh, we had a, uh, part-time position. Uh, two part-time positions, and that would have been, uh, likely around two thousand and eighteen when we stopped that.
Okay.
Two thousand seventeen, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the dates, but I can check that, uh, later.
So that was my question, if you had two part-time positions in the past, and now you're, um, hiring a, um. You know, a casual as opposed to a full-time position. So that was my question.
Yeah, those.
Yes.
I just wanted.
Yeah, and those, those two casual positions, uh, back in two seventeen or so, were, were, were also part-time as well, they were not full-time positions then either.
A two-part times equals a full-time, right?
Uh, not necessarily.
No.
I don't know if they were both at fifty percent, like, we, I'd have to go back and check on that, I, I don't know, Dawn, if you would know that right offhand?
Yeah, I can confirm they were not full-time positions.
Okay.
Well, so then, item number three, then, how confident is the council? That the present emergency measures plan that you already, uh, that you've got in place now. Meets the security needs of residents, especially our most vulnerable.
Yeah, so I'll start by answering that, and I'll invite any other counselors to jump in, so, like, I'll be honest with you, Claire, I'm not, uh. I'm not feeling one hundred percent confident, I don't know if that's a measure that even exists in the world of emergency preparedness, but. I feel like we could be doing more, um, and I think that's why you saw, you know, if, if council had requested to, you know. That I, and meet with, uh, the CAO and our emergency management coordinator, uh, Cecil Frost, um, to talk about. Storm impacts and storm reporting, and so, um, we, we did just meet recently, um, I guess would have been last month. Um, we are gonna start to report, uh, you know, on, on storms, that's gonna require probably another amendment to that bylaw, but. What Cecil had suggested was we should be collecting information, like, when do the comfort stations, you know, when are, when are they being activated, how many people are using them? Um, you know, are there any other services that we need, you know, that we need to pull from, from the county, so we're, we're really. Uh, I think wanting to get a better handle on, on what that looks like when our storm responses, because I. I think you made a great point, our, our weather is getting more volatile, it's not necessarily calming down, right? And so, it's really, you know, it's a huge concern for me, we're an extremely coastal community, both along the Verdura Lake and along the ocean side, so. Um, I feel like there's work to be done, um, I think we're, we're getting started on that, um. But, uh, but, yeah, no, it's, it's a great point, and I, you know, I'd even suggest that it's an urgent one, so. Um, so I don't know if any other counselors would like to weigh in on that? Okay. Um, thank you. Okay, no, thank you, great questions, and, uh, and, you know, we'll, uh, if you, you know, if you wanna kind of chat further about that. You mentioned Claire, a report that had been done, or, I guess, their consultations, and. If there's any of that information you wanna share with, with us, feel free to email it to me, um.
Well, I, I thought I had, um, forwarded it Friday to, uh, to you and the counselors, but.
Oh, well, maybe you did.
Uh, I'm not really sure if you would have received the, uh, but the past council, um. Was a brust of the, uh. You know, the plan that had been put together by the, um, you know, the emergency preparedness, uh, collaboration forum that took place in twenty-nineteen. It had been presented to council, but, uh, of course, we have an, a new council, so, uh. If you didn't receive it, I will send you, um, I will send you all of the, the report that, that had been summarized, the summary of that. Twenty-nineteen, I will send it off to you and the counselors.
That would be really great, because I don't really see that in my inbox right now.
But I thought for some reason it came from Michelle McPhee.
It did.
Yes, oh, okay.
Yeah, it did.
Because, yeah, it came from the Lardways, it should have come from the Lardways Medical Center, Kingston.
Yeah.
All right, you did receive it, okay.
Got it, we've got it, I found it in my inbox, we're good to go, so thank you for that, Claire, thanks for flagging that.
Okay.
You're welcome. Okay, um, so, a different Claire also has. So Claire Reagan, I'll invite you to put your camera on if you like, and, uh, you can go ahead and shoot with your question.
I, I just wanted to thank council for the support tonight, I think it's a, it's a great community project, and, uh, it'd be far-reaching for all its, uh. Uh, health benefits and mental health benefits and physical health benefits, and, and I just wanted to thank all council for, uh, for. For help chipping in and helping us get to this goal, and I'm sorry if we ruined, you know, Dawn's swan song surplus of that.
No, it's all, yeah, oh, thank you, Claire.
Very much, everybody.
Okay. Um. Uh, Councilor Sampson, did you have a question or? You're muted, I knew, you're muted, but I'm seeing the no, so, uh, us, I think also has a question, this is probably. I'll be honest, I wasn't paying as close enough attention to the time as I should, um, but Celeste, you can go ahead with your question.
Thank you, I couldn't find the raised hand, um, so my question is about the strategic plan refresh. Um, and I know that that tender has been awarded to FBM Architecture Interior Design. And in reading the, um, request for proposal that went out, it suggests that there will be some community consultation. That will be undertaken as part of the strategic plan refresh. Uh, in light of two of the issues that have come up at council tonight, one being housing and one being emergency planning. I'm just wondering, um, what, what, what plans are currently underway around community consultation? And my reason for asking is I'm aware of two other consultations that have recently taken place for the Richmond County. Both the, uh, the planning consultations and the accessibility. And, um, having participated in the accessibility, very, very small numbers of people. And I would like to know if there's a way that. Some of us who are in the business of doing community consultation may be able to support the municipality, do you try to get better engagement? For this strategic plan refresh?
Yeah, so if you're offering to help, the answer is yes.
First, I need to know the plan.
Does she need somebody to nominate, or is that what? To nominate, Celeste.
So I can tell you, Celeste, that we had a kickoff meeting with the consultants, um, I think, Dawn, you sent us a follow-up just today. Um, that we're gonna plan another session, um, the way the consultation plan is, or consultations will roll out will be. Um, supported by the Cape Breton Partnership, so unfortunately, those two hot consultations that, that you were talking about, I would agree, the numbers were, were small. Um, I think, uh, St. George's Channel might have won the prize for the most people, for the Plan Richmond, uh, sessions. Um, you know, other, other locations where the numbers were really small, quick discussions, but small, um, at the end of the day, we're hoping that. Uh, what, you know, the COVID curve is kind of starting to maybe be behind us, and we're hoping to have some local. Uh, in-person planning sessions, um, if at all possible, because I, you know, the virtual is, is great, but, um, we need other options. Um, and, you know, on the accessibility plan, you know, here we were, having to do all of that work virtually, because it just wasn't safe to gather, uh, people. But that's not necessarily the most accessible way of consulting, uh, doing consultations, so. Our next step will be to develop basically the timelines of when those consultations are gonna happen, what they're gonna look like. And certainly when that's, when we have that, I can share that with you, um, but we've just had one initial kickoff meeting with the consultants so far, and so. We don't have that level of detail yet.
Okay, thank you for that, the only reason I flag it is, um. I know that the, uh, the accessibility, I participated in one of the two accessibility. And I was the only member of the public, um, that was in that group, and, um. Local, sometimes when the consultants are not local, they don't necessarily have a local understanding. So I'm delighted to hear that Cape Breton Partnership is going to be involved in the consultation, because that, that gives me a higher level, higher level of confidence. Thank you.
Perfect, thanks a lot, Celeste. Okay, um, if there's no other questions, I think, um, I see Claire's hand still up, Claire Doyle, but I think that's just from before. So I'm just gonna check the chat. I'm not seeing anybody call in, so I think, uh, we will call it on question period, I think this might have been one of the best ones ever. I love it, all right, um, so could I have a motion at this time to move us in camera, please?
I made a motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson, can I have a second, or please? Councilor Dinkin, okay, Councilor Dinkin, second of the motion, any further discussion?
Question?
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye, aye?
Right.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried.